Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing to remember all those fighting across the world and remember all police officers who have lost their lives in the last couple of weeks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sorry to hit you in the chair. Welcome to the Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting of January 16, 2019. Introduce the board. To my left, we have Robert Anzalone, Sandra Cabrillion, Christopher Gerver, our Secretary Guelnagle. Over to the right side, we have Dennis Lindsay, our engineer, and Rick Golden, our attorney. I'm Maria Hunter, your chairperson. We do have minutes from January 2nd, and due to suggestion of one of our board members, we have an addendum to some of the items that were -- we have that in front of you. So do I have a motion from the board to accept the minutes of January 2nd and with the amendments that were submitted here tonight?
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Rich, did you say yes?
Yes. Sorry.
And is Rich Cattagio our other board member? There is an extra item added on tonight, which is Yonkers. It was inadvertently omitted from the agenda, and I apologize to everyone for that. Representative, if you can -- Tim, if you want to stand up by the microphone just for a few moments. We did receive on January 7th the short EAF. Dennis, would you like to review anything from Yonkers?
Okay, one thing is they submitted their EAF. Just a few clarifying -- just a few clarifying comments. When they prepared the EAF, I think they did it based on their knowledge, which is typical. But there's an EAF mapper under DEC, and there are certain questions that are not intuitive. And on Item 12B, on the archaeological sites, the question should have been answered yes. They're in the area. Also, Question 15 regarding threatened or endangered animals, the answer should be yes. There's the northern long-eared bat. And on Question 20 for remediation site, the answer is yes, and that's probably due to the proximity to Nipara. I don't think it would change necessarily any conclusions, but that's just so you have all the information when you act on Seeker. Other than that, we gave you our comments at the last meeting. I think you had some discussion on that. I think Rick is going to talk about the procedural matters here. We had originally listed as a site plan and special use permit, but I don't think that's applicable here, and Rick will -- you might have gone over it somewhat. I wasn't at your last meeting somewhat, but I think we should discuss how to proceed. We have made some recommendations, which I think will be included in conditions in terms of quality of the material. The -- I don't know how much you discussed at the last meeting, so I don't want to bore you with the additional details. We haven't written an additional report. And unless you have any questions, I don't have anything further other than to talk about procedure with Rick.
Thank you. Rick?
Sure. As I noted last time that we were here on January 2nd, that Gary Thomasberger has interpreted the code to be that Section 310-6H is the appropriate provision for the applicant to apply for approval on, that it's not a site plan, it doesn't fit into the particular provisions under the code for requiring site plan approval. So you have this very special 310-6H. Not that I need to, but I do agree with Gary as to his interpretation. Therefore, since it's not a site plan, there's no required public hearing, which I noted last time. And what you have before you, and you'll note, it's a little bit different than the resolution, because normally it's a resolution of approval with respect to either site plan, special permits, or subdivisions. It doesn't fit into any of those categories. So this is simply a filling and grading authorization, which is what the code provision calls for. It says that the planning board can approve a filling, grading, and I think moving of earth and authorize that pursuant to an authorized plan. And they have identified the plan for which they are going to be filling and grading the property, which should not be confused with the Shops of Woodbury, but it is just for location purposes, is in fact the property owned by the Shops of Woodbury. And so I have submitted a draft resolution with conditions. And you have to take your seeker tonight. I advised you last time that you should not take any of the initial seeker steps, because there had not been an environmental assessment form submitted. They have since submitted that. Therefore, I think the appropriate steps under seeker would be to assume lead agency since there are other involved agencies, type it as an unlisted action, and then make your determination of significance. Dennis has pointed out that there were some deficiencies in the EAF. He has pointed them out as to what they are. Therefore, it's within your knowledge as to what they are. I don't think it affects the significance of the project. But the applicant should be cautioned that if there's any other applications before the board, you should fill out the EAF online so that it accesses the database automatically, and you're not doing that offline. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Board members, Robert, any thoughts, concerns, questions?
Nothing additional. I'd just, you know, go over the resolution.
Sandy?
I just had a question about the soil testing. How is that done? Is it just done of one area, or is it done each load?
No, they take a representative from the area where they're going to collect the soil, where it's going to be removed from. You would take representative samples throughout, mix them, and then run a sample.
Okay. And does the applicant do that? And then Gary just signs off on it? Or does Gary --
Normally, it's the applicant that does that, yes. They would provide the results to -- actually, they usually provide them to the owner of the property. In this case, they should provide them to the owner of the property with a copy to the building department.
Okay.
And the specific condition here says that they are to go ahead and test it to the satisfaction of the building inspector and/or village engineer, so that if they see that the testing protocols that are being utilized are not sufficient, they can say, well, then, we're not going to consider the tests. But if they believe that the protocols are fine, then they can consider the tests. And it says that all the testing must be recorded and provided to the village building department, so that the public and obviously the planning board members have access to that as well.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Chris?
No, nothing.
Rich?
I'm good.
I'm good. We have a motion to assume lead agency.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion? Lost my place here.
Type the action.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to type the action as a unlisted action?
I make the motion.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to declare.
A determination of significance. I would suggest that, given that, and Dennis can weigh in, that it would be a negative declaration.
Agreed.
I'll offer a motion to declare it as a negative declaration. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Were there any opposed on that?
Was it all five yes? Because I can't hear everyone.
Yes.
Okay. So we're all good with that. So with all that being said, does the board want me to read the resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
This is a draft resolution of approval with conditions, fill and grading authorization for Yonkers Contracting Company, Palmer, Inc. Specific conditions, number one, which is on page three, the applicant shall submit a revised fill and grading plan to the satisfaction of the village engineer containing erosion and sediment control measures and stormwater management plan. Number two, did you get a copy of this?
No, I did not.
Anyone have an extra?
He can have mine. No, get another.
Does it have the right title on it, Chris?
Yeah.
I would suggest, subject to Dennis's input, because I didn't do it on these specific conditions as to when. Dennis, do you believe that submitting the revised fill and grading plan should be done prior to the signing of the plan?
I think it should be done prior to -- now, is there going to be -- I don't know if there's going to be a building permit issued?
Gary, I think, is going to issue a permit, like a fill permit.
All right. It should be done prior to any work, prior to the permit. And quite frankly, the reason I'm extending it there, they provided a copy of the notice of intent that they have filed in their SWIP with us today. I took a look at the provisions that they have in that SWIP. All of the measures that we would require under this are provided there. So they already are obligated to do certain things. So it's in there, but I think a plan would be better to have here where they could show it. But I think we could do that prior to actual construction starting, or permit being issued.
All right. Why don't we then, number one, I would suggest we amend to be prior to the issuance of any permit, comma, and then continue.
Board members, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Number two, all soils that are to be deposited upon the project site must first be tested for contamination before being transported and deposited thereon to the satisfaction of the building inspector and/or village engineer. All testing must be recorded and provided to the village building department. You're okay with that?
Yes, I understand.
Board members, with all that's been discussed tonight, do I have a motion to accept this resolution with the addition of the signing?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Who seconded it? Rich. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, that was everybody?
Yes, that was everybody.
Thank you.
All right, now, Rich, you go.
Great, thank you so much for your time.
Have a good night. Yes, you can repeat that, yes. On to your part. Due to the fact that we have a new tape recorder this evening, I'm going to ask everyone to keep the microphones close to you and to speak clearly and loudly, so that we're making sure that everything is being recorded correctly. Last meeting that we had, the tape recorder had some glitches in it, and we also had glitches with some of the microphones. So I want to be quite clear while we speak and we're making motions and secondes, so it's recorded properly. Next item on the agenda is Journey Church of Hudson Valley, public hearing for a special permit and site plan approval for a place of worship in existing structure located within the Old Glory Mall. Said property is located at 95-3 Mar Lane in the Harriman and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 225, Block 1, Lot 41. Anyone here for the applicant? Can you please come up to the microphone, state your name for the record, please? And the microphone should be on.
It appears to be on.
There you go.
Good evening, everyone. Jim Farr, Farr Engineering, representing Journey Church.
Okay. Just for the record, we did receive -- we did receive an updated Google map with showing up the parking spaces as requested. We also received a picture, if I can find it, of the signage, how the sign is going to be on the church. It says Journey Church. Sunday service begins at 10:00 a.m. They superimposed it on the building. Do you have anything that you want to add?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay. Dennis, I know Natalie had a very few words here.
Okay, well, I have a few words.
Okay.
The plan that's submitted is exactly what we wanted. We wanted some more detail, so that we have something for the file. I think we -- everybody's used to this as Google Earth, but I think this may be just -- it's an aerial photo that they --
Yeah, I don't believe -- was it a drone? Yeah, drone photo.
So this is a depiction of the lot as it exists now. There are no proposed physical changes to the property, other than the putting a sign up. The lot has already been restriped, and the lot, when it was restriped, was restriped with additional parking. So because of that, this is an opportunity for the board to take a look at that, and if it is satisfactory, to allow that to exist as the site plan in terms of the striping of the lot. And that would work in conjunction with the site plan that's on file for the other matters, drainage, access, and all that sort of thing. So I think the plan is fine. I think that the plan, however, since it's going to serve as partial site plan, should have a title block on it with a date, the name of the structure, and I mentioned this to Jim. And I think that's a recommendation that we have that, and I don't know if I gave that to you, Rick, as a condition. But as a condition would be that this plan be submitted with a title block on it with dating and that information. The only other thing here is our ESOs. They have added a number of parking spaces. Parking spaces seem to work. There's a one-way path around the back of the structure. I think that works well, too. And I don't think the fire department would stage any equipment in there, but I'm not a fireman. And generally, we -- you referred to the ESOs. But I think that can be handled by a condition, that the ESOs take a look at this. And even if they require the removal of some parking, this site would still comply with your requirements for minimum parking. So it would not be a variance. It would be nothing along those lines. But I think it should be referred to them, let them have to take a look at it, which is your standard practice. I've talked to Rick. I think he's crafted a condition in your resolution that would reflect that, if that's your pleasure. And other than that, I don't think I have anything further.
Okay. That's it. Rick? Want me to come back to you?
No. Just wanted to add something. Presented a resolution for your consideration. It's a Type II action, so no further seeker needs to be done. The 30 days has elapsed since the GML referrals were made, so that this board is able to act at this time. The Department of Planning has not yet responded. The DPW did respond that it was not a problem. Obviously, there has to be a public hearing tonight and taking opened and comments made and closed. And then I think it's ready for the resolution being read and considered. I have added something on the first specific condition, given what Dennis said of wanting a title block for the engineer and the date of the photo. And other than that, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Board members, any comments, or you want to go out to the public first?
To the public?
I just have one question about the -- I know there's arrows that go around the building. There's no signs or anything on the building that say one way or any freestanding signs, right? It's just the arrow?
It's just the arrows.
Okay.
From what I know.
I believe that's all there are.
Okay.
Do you think we need a sign?
The only thing you might have sometimes on the way that you're not supposed to go in is just the "do not enter" sign there.
Right.
And you put a "do not enter" sign there.
Just is there -- I haven't been at the back of the building. Is there enough room to pass?
There's about a 20-foot -- I drove by there on Sunday. From where the stripes are, where the side parking and where the building is, it's about 20 feet, and it goes down to maybe 16 feet where there's bullets there. When you come around the back, it's really a wide sweep around, and then it comes out.
So if someone inadvertently went the wrong way, there's still -- there's not going to be a problem?
If somebody came off the short side and they saw the backside here, it might be appropriate to have maybe another arrow or two painted with arrows coming out. But if they came up the short side, which would be the --
Well, there is an arrow in, and there's an arrow out.
Right.
Would someone have to back up? It depends on your driving skills. It depends how the people have parked on the side, okay?
Okay.
I know some people that wouldn't back up. I know some people that pull through stalls, so they never have to back up. So, and maybe you know some of the same folks. So I think that the one-way is appropriate around there. Belt and suspenders would be put in, a sign, "do not enter." I don't know that it's necessary.
Okay.
I don't think it's that kind of traffic, so.
Okay.
Anyone else comment?
Personally, I'm a fireman, that the five spots on the number three side of the building, the right side of the building closest to the -- was it the parking right over there or the Mercedes dealership?
No.
The BMW dealership over there. I personally feel those five spots up until around the bend should be eliminated. I feel if you have cars parked there, that's a tight swing. If you do have to get a piece of apparatus back there, and the fire zone should be continued around on that side of the building. I'm not thinking for this building. I'm thinking for the storage facility that's behind it.
All right. If you do that, or if you want to do that at this level here at the board, my suggestion would be that you not just eliminate the spaces, that you stripe it, double stripe. Because if it looks like a two-way, people will use it like a two-way, all right? Although that's the entrance. But if you narrow it up, people understand that it's a one-way in, and you don't end up with that other two-way traffic. This project, I mean, it would not stand or fall on those five spaces, that's for sure.
Anyone else before I go out to the public? Jim, I'm going to ask you to have a seat, see if anyone from the public would like to speak on this. Anyone in the first row? No one's there. Second row? Anyone at all? If you want to come up and speak? Third row? Anyone in the back of the room, sitting or standing? Anyone in the room at all that want to speak on this public hearing? With no one coming forward, I'm going to offer a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You can come back up to the podium. So Dennis, are you going to reach out to the ESOs for us?
If the condition, I think, that's in the resolution, if you're happy with that, I think it calls for that, I would talk to the ESOs.
Yeah, I did speak with -- I did go through the back of the building. I drove with a town board member who's a former fireman with Woodbury. And I did speak with Gary Thomasberger, and he felt that the fire department would fight the fire from the front of the building, and that there was a wide enough area behind the building. But if we can get something from the current fire chief, we don't have to worry about the police and the ambulance, because if the fire truck can get through, everyone else can get through.
Well, even if the fire doesn't get through, the fire department may not care, because they wouldn't park back there anyway. For your police, generally, they don't have any problems getting in the areas. The only one would be ambulance if there's a rear access and they need to get back there. But again, I don't think it would be an issue for them. I think it's just a matter of courtesy, if you want to ask them.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a -- I'll offer a motion to declare it as a Type II action. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think it was five yes. All right. With that being said, board members, do you want me to proceed with the resolution of approval, draft that we have in front of us?
Yes.
Well, I think, yeah.
Did I miss something?
No, I just -- we've had two issues that were discussed, one of which is the "do not enter" sign, and the other is to eliminate five parking spots. So I think there ought to be some kind of determination there, so that that can either be included or excluded from this resolution.
Well, Dennis said you didn't think that there was a need for a "do not enter" sign? Did I hear you correct?
No, I don't think it's -- with the striping there, I think it's fine. There's a big, bold, yellow stripe going in and coming out. You could put a condition that said that if it becomes a problem, that the building inspector has the authority to require it. But I don't think it's necessary.
Do you want to -- board members, you want a condition that states that if it becomes a problem, then the building inspector has the right to request a "do not enter"?
Yes.
Board members?
Good, sure.
Yes.
Thank you. So you're crafting that, I presume? Okay. In regards to the --
There's five spaces on the semi kind of northeast side.
If anything, I would have thought two of the spaces, the way the -- right in the corner, the point of the building there. But where is -- well, in specific condition number, we can -- one, we can expand on that based on the interpretation from the fire chief, if we need to delete any parking spaces that they advise the engineer and the building inspector, if we add that in there.
To number one, you said?
Number one. And I'm sure Rich is crafting something as we speak.
Well, I -- no, because I was crafting something on the other, so I missed what you were saying on this one.
Well, let's, you know, board members, I'm going to -- I'm going to read the resolution, and I'm going to revise number one, how's that pertaining to the parking spaces?
Okay.
Specific condition, number one, the applicant shall submit a revised striping and parking plan to the emergency services organizations and the village engineer. This resolution of approval shall not be signed until the revised striping and parking plan is to the satisfaction of the emergency services organizations and village engineer. We can add in there, if the emergency service organizations feel, or the fire department feel there's a need to remove between three to five parking spaces on the north end corner of the building, let the engineer and the building inspector know, and we can revise something to that effect, so that we're covered. They say it needs to be removed.
I think that's already in here, if you don't mind. Because this says it's just the plan to their satisfaction. And if they don't like those five spaces, if they don't like five other spaces, or they don't like all 17 around the back.
Right.
They're going to go, according to this. Or the applicant can return.
Right. And we're fine with that. Whatever, if emergency services needs to make a modification to the striping, then we'll do that.
I think the question of Chris was, in his opinion, there are five spaces he would like to see eliminated.
I'd like this, as part of the resolution, I'd like to see the five spaces eliminated. I don't want to leave it to chance.
So then, just before we get to that issue, just a cleanup, right now it ends with the satisfaction of the emergency service organizations and the village engineer. I would add, comma, and a dated title block for the engineer. Right? Which is what Dennis wanted.
Yes, that's fine. I talked to Dennis about it.
So now, we have to, I think, before proceeding, you should determine what the planning board wants, whether or not the spaces and the number of spaces that should be eliminated, or leaving it to the ESOs to do so.
I say no. It's my opinion on speaking with the building inspector and visually going back there and looking at it with a -- with myself and my husband, and I take the word of the building inspector. Robert?
I agree. Yes. I agree with what you said.
Sandy?
So, just so then, I understand this, has any of the ESO been out there as far as they didn't do like they normally do, as far as other applications?
I'm not going to sign the resolution until the emergency services organizations give their opinion.
Right.
I don't think -- We haven't asked them yet.
I don't think they know.
Okay.
But they may have seen this site, but that we haven't asked specifically for this, whether they, you know, their opinion on the space.
Yeah. I'd like them to see it, but that's part of the resolution, so.
But we're talking about --
Right.
We're talking about putting in the resolution to remove five parking spots, and I said no.
I said no. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that it needs to be unless they say so. So that'll come later, if they say so. So no.
Chris, you say?
I say yes.
Rich?
No, I said we let the emergency service review it and let them make the determination.
Okay. All right. So with that being said, Rick, the last sentence again, it says this on number one, this resolution of approval shall not be signed until the revised striping and parking plan is to the satisfaction of the emergency service organizations and village engineer. Is that what you said, comma?
No, and a comma, and a dated title block for the engineer, or for the applicant's engineer, I guess, is added.
And that goes in the bottom right-hand corner. And you can always get the block information from secretary.
Or do you want a, a stamp block on it too?
Yeah, there's, we have a...
Okay, we'll get that.
Okay. All right, so number one, we're good? Number two, the revised striping and parking plan shall meet the requirements of the village code for parking based upon the calculation for all tenants. The total required number of parking spaces for all uses is 89. Should the number of parking spaces fall below 72 spaces, the granted variance amount, the granted variance amount that applicants require to return to the planning board. But we're doing...
That's, that's a little confusing, but the total number of spaces required is 89. There was a variance granted, bringing the number down to 72. If for any reason they fell below that number, they would have to come back. From what I see in the plan here, even if we remove all those spaces in the back there, they're probably not going to be back before you, but that's the condition that would require them to come back.
Okay, gotcha. Board members, you okay with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Number three, the proposed building sign shall be in compliance with the village code, and prior to erecting a sign, the applicant must obtain a building permit from the village building department. Did you get a copy of this resolution?
No, I did not. That's okay then.
It was late.
Oh, that's right, it was late today, I apologize.
That's my apologies, I should have sent one to Jim, I didn't think.
That's okay, all the conditions seem fine. Dennis and I had a conversation earlier this morning.
So board members, with this draft resolution of approval with that added line in specific condition number one, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So there's nothing going to be with respect to the "Do Not Enter" sign, except to the extent that the ESOs may require it as part of their amendment. Okay.
This resolution will not be signed until condition number one is fulfilled.
Correct, and the plan.
Yep. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 That was a no on Chris?
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, have a good night. Next item on the agenda is Weiss slash Apple Hill, discuss and review additional documents submitted for ARB application of a single-family dwelling located at 26 Apple Hill Drive in Highland Mills. Said property is known in the village, it would be tax maps as section 204, block two, lot two. For the record, we received a revised ARB on January 4th, and we also received drawings on January 4th and a map showing the driveway on January 4th for the application. Hello?
Hello, Kate Myrow, Blue Steen Shapiro, Rich and Barone, the attorney for the applicant. I'm here with Nathan Brock, who's on behalf of the applicant. Barry Terrick is our architect, Sean Queenen is our engineer. I'd like to apologize first of all, because I just got this case this afternoon, so I couldn't ask the board to please bear with me, I wasn't here at the last time that the matter was submitted. I did speak to Rick earlier, who was good enough to give me some information as to what's transpired so far. It's my understanding that there were some, there were discussions at the last meeting, there was some information to be provided. I don't know whether you need me to fill in anything at this point, but we're happy to answer questions. I will tell you what I know about this, about the application, this is for a single-family dwelling on a parcel. The parcel is, at this time, vacant and heavily wooded. The house is going to be set back approximately 158 feet to the, from the street to the closest part of the house. That entire front area between the street and the house is wooded, and the majority of that wooding will be maintained. And there's a drop in grade of approximately 15 to 16 feet from the street to the foundation level of the house, so there's a substantial drop as to where this house is going to be seated from the street. Both sides of the house, I believe, will maintain wooded areas, which will serve as natural screening, and I think based on the way the house is situated and the wooded nature of the lot, it's going to be very, this house is really not going to be seen either from the street or from the neighboring properties. So I think just that fact alone is what jumped out at me as to what I think is a factor that kind of offsets some of the concerns I believe that the boards had with the size and otherwise. So I'm happy to answer questions, provide anything we can at this point.
Thank you. Dennis, do you want to add anything before I go to the board members?
Well, as you know, I wasn't present at the last meeting, but we did file a report, we gave you some of the history of the prior applications in here, because this is an ARB review and there's questions about similarity and dissimilarity and that sort of thing. We tried to put it within the context of the other approvals that the boards granted for this area, and so that you can visualize it in connection with the neighborhood, if you will. We have listed all the approved homes, we provided you, I think we provided you with a full listing.
Yep.
So you have a full listing of all the homes, so you can do some relative comparisons. Understand this, that most of the other homes showed a finished first floor and a finished second floor, and the numbers that you see there for the finished areas, that range from the low 2,000s up to the mid 4,000 square foot range, are for the two stories. And this particular structure has a 6,585 square foot first floor, and the second floor is as large, almost as large, but they've only finished the small portion, so they're only listing 369, 359, 69 square feet. But if you're comparing the bulk in the area for what you see from the street, because in the street you don't see the rooms and how they're, they're set up, what you see is the mass of the structure. So on the mass of the structure here, it would be over 12,000 square feet. So at least that's, they didn't give us the numbers, but I think that it pretty much mirrors the floor underneath a little bit less because of the atrium, so if you include that, plus the, some area in the attic there, which is another area that's unfinished, it gets up to that kind of a number. Kind of hard to check it out, because we don't have, on the second view, they put a section, they did a broken section, so they don't show exactly how, how much is unfinished at the top. So we've given you those, that information, the applicant can provide whatever else you need to try to judge how this fits in that area. And the visual aspects, as Mr. Myrow mentioned, if its setting might make a difference to you too as well.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You said that, if I understand you correctly, the, is it the facade of the house that would basically reflect the 12,000 square foot home?
I don't know, it's 12,000 square feet, I'm trying to gauge it.
But essentially, that size of structure?
It's, it's the mass of the home, and if, if you have unfinished areas, you can't tell from the street whether they're finished or unfinished.
Right, but, but that doesn't necessarily reflect what you're going to see from the street as to this particular house.
I think I noted that the setting of the house in the hillside might make a difference.
Okay, okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify that, because it sounds different that way, but.
Where on this list is the home that we approved across the street from them? Is it 13 Apple Hill?
Well, they're 26, is it?
But I think, but the inside circle, I think it's, I think it's 13 across the street, because that says 2016, and now it says intended.
I did not write, I didn't write the numbers down.
Because I believe in the location plan, the circular piece that's in this, goes, that's where the odd numbers are, because it's odd even, so if I, if I do this right, five, because on the corner there, that should be the old farmhouse, it's on the corner.
I'm just looking to see, the adjacent parcels, they only list them by section lot and block, they don't list the numbers.
But you have the SPLs.
Oh, we have the SPLs here, okay. So the one that's to the south, the adjacent property to the south, is 20421, and that would be 28 Apple Hill to the south?
Not available, you say.
And the north one is 2042-3, and that's 24, okay. So it is the odds on the outside, but across the street, I don't know if they gave any SPLs. I'll take a look at the file.
Because I would presume, because that house is, I've been going by, you're last note where it says 204-2-20, 13 Apple Hill, that was last done in 2016, and that house that's on the corner, that would be across from them, that's, that's 13, so it's number 13, so that home is...
Across is 13?
Yes, so 13, yeah, because it's, the way we numbered it up there was a little weird with the numbering, because it was the inside pieces. So that home we approved at 4,479 square feet, and this one you wanted at 69, 6,954, correct? So we're looking at a difference of 2,500 square feet from the houses across the street.
Well, again, that's living space, okay, that's not the size of the structure.
And so what you have in your ARB is a provision to go ahead and consider the similarity and dissimilarity of a proposed home in the context of, and in comparison with, the other homes in, not only within 300 feet, but within the neighborhood. And square footage may be helpful in that regard, especially if you're comparing livable square footage in one versus livable square footage in the other, and almost all of the home is livable square footage. But what Dennis is saying is that with, for similarity, dissimilarity purposes, if you have only a portion of your home is living space and you count up that square footage, it doesn't necessarily tell you the whole story with whether the visual aspect, which is an important part of this for similarity and dissimilarity for ARB, whether or not it's very dissimilar, because it's a much larger bulk area, even though the living space may only be a certain percentage. So this is, these are the types of things that this board needs to take into consideration to determine whether or not it is excessively dissimilar.
I mean, going forward, we may want to ask applicants for the volume of the structure. That's done frequently, they do heating calculations and things like that, it tells you the air.
They're going for the volume?
Volume.
Volume.
So if, and that's going forward, because we didn't do that with previous applications, it may have been in there, but we didn't search that out. Generally, what we see is, I've previously felt that you were comparing, no pun intended about this, but apples to apples, and that, that's the fact that the buildings usually were fully built out. People took advantage of all the space they had, that they put an envelope around, and when you looked at square footage, it was that. This one is somewhat unique, they have a lot of space inside, which they're not taking advantage of right now, that may just be what they want to do. But for your purposes in looking at the structure, you have to understand that there's the larger building, I don't want you to be surprised later on with the size of the building, I try to give you a feel for what that might be. And if the applicant would like to refine that further, that'd be fine, because I'm going on trying to judge, because the sections don't show the full area. Okay.
So, I mean, my, I just like to make a general comment as to what really the scope of this review is supposed, is dictated by, by the code. When you examine excessive similarity or excessive dissimilarity, it's not necess, the examination is, is what, is not just simply the fact that there may be a dissimilarity or similarity, it has, that, that similarity or dissimilarity must have a detrimental effect. It's not just simply that you look and you see a building is large and one is small. It has to actually result in a detrimental effect in, in your code, and I believe this is best set out in chapter eight, in chapter 8.5, it says that you can only disapprove an application if you find that the excessive similarity or dissimilarity to be so detrimental to the desirability, property values, or development of the surrounding areas to provoke one or more of the harmful effects set forth in 8.1.
Correct. And that, and that's what this board's determination is, is that they have to make that determination as to excessive dissimilarity and what they believe will be the impact of that dissimilarity in the context of those criteria that are set forth in that provision.
Right, so my, my only point is, is that if you have a neighborhood where you have houses that are all, you have 20 houses that are 3,000 square foot, and somebody wants to build a 20,000 square foot home, that fact alone doesn't necessarily mean that the dissimilarity will have an adverse effect. In this case, as in this case, we, we can pretty much demonstrate, you will never see the house. You're not going to see this house. The visual, it's the visual impact that is being measured here, the exterior appearances of buildings having a harmful effect, that's what's in your code, so.
If your position is, is that you will not be able to see this home, then I think you need to provide proof to this board through visuals or other proof to show that you will not see this house.
We, I think we can do that.
Not that I have seen.
Well, the visual that you have there is supposed to be from the road, and that one shows the building, it shows some trees there, but it doesn't show, I mean, if it's down from the road, it's going to have a different perspective, that's part of the hiding principle you're talking about, but that doesn't really let us see that.
That second image, if I would have added all the trees, all I would be, would be showing is just a bunch of trees. I intentionally took out a lot of trees on the rendering just to show...
What I'm saying is that if you want to demonstrate that this home will not be seen, then you have to show that through some visual aid to this board, and if that means that all you see is trees, then you provide something, and then the board has to look at it to see whether or not they believe that that photo simulation in essence is a correct simulation. But the board has already said that you weren't required to have a photo simulation, but that doesn't mean that you can't submit something to try to demonstrate what you want to demonstrate, and the board will consider that.
Let me just clarify that, we believe it would substantially eliminate any visual impact to the, and it may very well be that we could show it, but I'd have to leave this up to Barry and John as to whether, what we can produce for the board, and we'd be happy to do it.
I think more to the point is several aspects need to be considered.
Here, yeah, speaking to the mic.
Barry Terrick, architect. I think the point that's trying to be made is that there's certain factors to this piece of property and certain factors in this design that should be taken into account that I think will lessen the impact of this house. One is, and I'm not sure it was stated correctly, the change in elevation from the street to the first floor of the house, the actual first floor you stand on is 12 feet. That's a, that's an entire story and then some. That combined with the fact that the house is designed essentially as a one-story house, it's an expanded ranch when you really look at it. The second story, the 300 some odd feet for the second story, was merely created because the owner wanted to have a balcony effect around his great room. If you look at the plans, that's all that is, is a balcony around the great room. It's an open space. You know, the, the house is all set with a first floor plate height, which is not the typical in the neighborhood, so, you know, in terms of impact, what you're looking at here is a one-story wall with a roof as opposed to a two-story wall with a roof, which is what's typical in the area. I don't know that it's effective to try and quantify the square footage. I could and have designed a house that's 40 feet or 50 feet wide in the front. From the road, you're not sure if that house is 30 feet deep or 200 feet deep, and obviously the square footage potential of those two different situations would have no effect from its public appearance. So I don't, I don't know that, trying to do research for square footage and volume, I don't, I don't know that that's an effective way to determine dissimilarity from other houses. We tried to break this up into different masses, we used similar elements in the neighborhood, dormers, double hung windows, similar colors, similar siding, roof pitches. You know, if I keep talking, I'd argue myself in the same, it's too similar, so it's, it's a lot of the same stuff, a lot of the same... So it's a lot of the same stuff, a lot of the same ideas as in the neighborhood. It's, it's, I'm not going to say barely, but it's a small increment bigger than the house that's at 13 Apple Hill. I think we discussed this last week. That house is 108 feet plus in width. This one's 130 in width. Yes, it's 22 feet larger. I don't think its effect is going to be significant, especially since it's really broken up into so many different masses.
Okay, but I, to aid the planning board, I mean, you say that it's 12 feet below the roadway, which will effectively eliminate any view of the home, yet the view that you show in that drawing does not eliminate the view of the home. You can see the home clearly. So I, what you're saying and what you're representing are two different things.
So, with that being said.
Was this simply to show the elevation of the house?
With that picture that you have there, the bottom picture, can it be redone to show the drop in grade of the 12 feet? That's what we're asking for.
Much accurate as the real thing is going to be. And I'm even going to show an aerial, like a top view.
Yes or no?
I think this was for aesthetic purposes. If we showed the drop, you wouldn't have seen it. It would have been.
Yes, the applicant is going to get us a better picture reflecting the drop in the grade from the streets to the property.
We'll get your photos, we'll get your simulations shown, and if we have to, we'll do leaves down if we can, and if we, we may propose some screening of every greens that would pretty much ensure. So I'm feeling that's fairly significant, and I absolutely agree with the board that you should see that before, you know, before you make your decision.
If they prepare that type of a picture for us, that would, the board members would have to agree that that's acceptable, showing the grade.
They want to see it.
Well, are you saying that they have to agree it's acceptable ahead of time, or that...
No, 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 when they see it.
When they see it.
With the revised picture that we're going to get.
But realize that there's, there's a whole art and science to visual depictions, right, and photo simulations. And if it's not done correctly by somebody who knows what they're doing, then it's not going to really depict what the thing is, what you look at. So if you believe that that's accurate from, you're looking at all this information and you feel competent enough to go ahead and assess that, then yes, you can go ahead and take into that, take that into account and make your determinations. If you don't feel like you know whether or not that's an accurate depiction, not necessarily that it was intentionally misrepresented, but there is, you know, experts in the field of this photo simulation that can determine whether or not a depiction is accurate based upon the assumptions that were made and shown in a particular picture. So the board has to decide whether or not it's satisfied with that, or whether or not it wants to get some input from somebody else to assist it in making that determination.
Well, we understand that after we submit, you take a look. If you want to have somebody else look at it, we're going to have to wait for that to happen. We understand that. We feel confident we can present competent evidence, so.
And I'm not suggesting that you would try to put something in, but this board are not schooled in photo simulation.
Got it.
And the depiction of things through renderings and photo simulations, and that is something that's available to them, as you've noted.
We'll make sure we copy you.
If they need to go ahead and do that, then they have the ability to go ahead and do that, if they don't feel competent. If they feel competent, then they can go ahead and make that determination.
All right, how many board members? I'm going to start with Chris. Thoughts, concerns, questions?
None.
Sandy?
Just a couple of things. When we looked at a larger home in WP3, we did a site visit, and I think that that was really helpful, because we got to see exactly the slopes and where the home was going to be. So I think that that might be something we want to consider, too, as far as the lot itself. I think, what did, what did we ask for?
If you do that, I think you probably should do it the way you did it last time, because it was revealing that one. And what the applicant did then was they staked the corners.
Yeah.
Okay, and, you know, stakes with bold paint, you know, pretty much aside, that way you can get a size view. That would also let you know, there is, this is a fairly heavily wooded lot. So it would be good to take a look. Now, obviously, even a heavily wooded lot has the time of year like this where, you know, it's not hidden, because there's no leaves on the trees.
Right.
But you can envision what it would be in different seasons. But the best thing would be just to put a few center line down the driveway and stake off, in this case, just the four corners. I think that's probably fine, and the board could get an idea of the mass. You're going to have to use large stakes, because to see from one corner to the other corner is going to be difficult, probably, with all the trees and everything there.
And the other thing, too, is that if, in fact, you decide to rely in part upon the fact that, because as Dennis said, this is a very heavily wooded area and where it's going to be placed, you may not be able to see it, or you'd have limited views of this, and therefore, that may impact upon whether or not you think that any dissimilarity is either excessive in the view of it, despite square footage, or otherwise. But if you believe that those trees are important in a similar manner that you do, this isn't under ridge preservation, but in a similar manner that you do for ridge preservation, if that's part of your decision-making, you can require the applicant, as part of a deed restriction, to have areas that you, they cannot eliminate those trees. Because you say, all right, we can't see it, because all these trees are here. Obviously, if there's no restriction, they can clear-cut that the next day, and your decision was based upon now a faulty analysis. So if, if you believe that your ultimate conclusion is based in part upon the natural screening that's there, then you should consider the fact that you want that natural screening to be preserved through a deed restriction.
Okay.
And I think the applicant would understand that.
Okay, and then Barry, I just had some questions in the reduction map that you gave us of the interior, and I don't know, it was just, you know, something left off, but I don't see the regular kitchen defined. I mean, it was with the dinette, but it's not on there anymore?
Mind if I come on?
Yeah, sure. It just says dinette?
Right, so this is all the kitchens.
Okay, before it said, yeah, yeah, that's okay. Okay, and then you said that it's a two-bedroom, so it's the, so the nursery is the second bedroom?
Nursery is the second bedroom.
Okay, and then the bathrooms are still labeled number four, number five, and number six?
That's my mistake, it's just I didn't edit that.
Okay, so it's three bathrooms plus the ma-
There's nothing hidden, it's all.
No, that's what I'm saying, so it's three bathrooms plus the master bath?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, there's a powder room here, powder room here.
Okay. Okay, so it's one, two, three, and then master bath?
Two and two halves.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I just, that's what I figured it was, I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, okay, yeah, that's all I have right now.
Robert?
Can we get a better example of the back of the house than the sketch that you provided? More of a, you know, like an example as the front, because I get a different image of the house when I'm looking at it from the back. It seems much huger in size.
You want to have a 3D rendering of the back, is that what you're saying?
A rendering similar to that.
That's not a problem, you can do that, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Rich?
Again, I'm focused on the document the building inspector gave us on the size of the homes in the subdivision, where the smallest is 2,479, and the largest looks like there are several, 4,850. And I'm, you know, being on the planning board 10 years, what we've done on similar applications, we've increased it anywhere, I think, 10, 15, 20% over the largest. Obviously, this is a lot more than that, so I'm looking what we've done in the past over the last 10 years, and not the view from the road.
Great, one other thing, just to the applicant's clear. I do believe this falls under two criteria. It's ARB and ridge preservation, unless I missed something. This is above elevation 600, so ridge preservation applies. We put that in our memo and also attached. A lot of the provisions are the same in terms of the review, so.
You can disregard my statement to the contractor.
So are we, are there issue, are still outstanding issues regarding your ridge preservation regulations? Are we, are we still having to prove out on that?
You still need to prove the ridge preservation. However, the board had previously moved to waive the photo simulation that's required, although you may be presenting something similar to that in order to prove your point. But yes, you have to consider both issues of ARB as well as the ridge preservation.
If the photo simulate, simulation was waived for that purpose, what other evidence would you be expecting from us?
The board was trying to give the applicant relief in not requiring unnecessarily a photo simulation, if they believe that because of the location of this particular home, that it wasn't otherwise going to impact on the visual corridors that are identified in the photos, in the ridge preservation.
Okay.
However, if because of ARB or otherwise, that you want to have photo simulation in order to prove your point, that it's not going to be visible in order to try to impact the excessive dissimilarity aspect of this, then obviously, you're free to do so.
That's fine.
And the other reason I mention is not so much necessarily for the submittal requirements, but also for the review criteria for the board. We talked about dissimilarity and similarity. When you get into ridge preservation, it talks about building design and the use of lower elevations on a lot, which is to your point, but it has other criteria, too, that you would have to satisfy, just so you're aware of that.
I've gone through the ridge preservation criteria for whatever we're going to submit. We'll make, we'll try to submit proof that we're not going to have an impact.
It's 310-13.
Yeah, I got it.
Review that. I have a question for you. How long is the driveway off the road, out of curiosity?
Driveway is probably a little bit longer than 170 feet.
170?
70 feet.
170?
170.
170.
I'm just trying, because my driveway is 300 feet. I'm trying to figure out depth of the, about where the pond is. Trying to think how far it goes down, all right. Being that we're in a frozen state right now with the ground, I don't see how we're going to be able to get the stakes in the ground unless you become creative and put tripods in four corners with.
We'll figure something out. If you let us know when you're going to be there, we'll confirm beforehand that they're in.
If there's enough trees, you may find a tree closer to the corner just to tie a ribbon around, and we'll work that.
Now, all right. I don't expect it to be done by this weekend, because who knows what the weather's going to be like this weekend, and with the snow and whatnot anticipated. The other thing is restrictions and standards. B5, it says about any healthy tree with an eight-inch or greater power at fresh height shall not be removed. We need to have, we've never asked for a tree survey up there.
You have asked for tree surveys.
But not.
On wooded lot like this, any place you go, okay, you're going to take out some trees. So I think you should take a look at the site when you're in there, and if you find that exactly where they put the house, there's five specimen trees, where if they moved it 20 feet, it would be different. So I think you probably take a look at it and see if it makes a difference to you, or make a difference. If not, when we've had a fully wooded lot like this, generally, we've taken the outline, which is exactly what they've done here, and say that it's all wooded. So, and they've shown the limits of disturbance. What we tell an applicant, so you know, if you have limits of disturbance there and woods is an important part of the visual impact and protection for the site, then there will be a requirement that those limits of disturbance be honored by your contractors. Sometimes that doesn't happen.
Okay, so with all this being said, we've got some work to do again. And one thing I've noticed in my notes, I keep putting on every meeting, short EAF. I don't see that. I like we asked for it at.
Did you submit the EAF? Do you have any EAF?
I don't recall.
In August, I wrote the bottom, need short EAF. January 2nd, I wrote, short EAF needed. We did give the revised ARB application, thank you.
We're type 2, but we'll submit an EAF indicating that it's a type 2.
We don't need it anymore?
Well, the SECA regulations say that if it's a type 2 action, it's not needed, right? So, but typically, you have required the short form EAF, because that assists you in determining whether or not it is a type 2.
We can get that for you. We can get that for you right away.
Yeah, that's not a big sample.
Okay, I have that.
All right, so I want to go back to the board members. We're looking at square footage of just shy of 7,000 square feet, where the 13 Apple Hill is just shy of 4,500 feet. At this point, that house at 13 Apple Hill, it's, there's no trees, all the trees are gone, and that sticks out there. The house to the next, coming back, that's a very large, they're large homes. Then you have the old farmhouse, and then if you go across the street, there's large homes as well. If you go drive through Apple Hill, they may not look large from the front because the way they're situated. So I need to know what you're, how you feel about 60, you know, 6954 square footage, whether it's similar or dissimilar, and your thoughts. Rich?
If, can I just weigh in before others do? Just to make sure everybody's in context. Again, your role with respect to dissimilarity, excessive dissimilarity, is, one, whether it is dissimilar, two, whether that's excessive, and three, whether or not it has the consequences that are set out in your code as a result of that, that excessive dissimilarity is trying to, that you don't want excessive dissimilarity in order to avoid those consequences. So, again, the square footage is a helpful determination, but it's only one criteria. And as Dennis said, especially when you're dealing with livable space square footage, and there's an application before you where the livable space is a fraction of the entirety of the square footage, it may be in apples and oranges comparison.
Also, you have a site visit planned. You may get a greater perspective, rather than trying to make any determination now, and looking at it in perspective. And you mentioned the houses around there, how that'll weigh on your opinion, so looking at from the street down, down the hill, to see where it is, and then going on the site and understanding the mass of the structure relative to the others, you may be in a better position to answer that question.
Site visit?
Let's pick a warm day.
August? I'm only heading. Why don't we do this? Why don't you let us know when you have time to go out there, heading the weather? You can let Dennis know about it, and then we can.
When do you think the board would, is it a weekend trip, do you think, or just, would you go together, or?
Yeah.
Are you going to, are you going to be in attendance for it?
I don't know, because I could go, the only reason I'd go is to talk to the board, if you had any questions. I can visually, I can take a look at it myself, if I'm my way around, but sometimes they do it on the weekends, because it's convenient for the board. The other time is before meetings. However, in this time of the year, I don't know if you want to do that. Sun's staying up a little later, but it's not going to be up there at 7 o'clock, not for a while yet, so. How long do you think, Barry, it's going to take you to get it marked out, or?
Well, I think it would happen sometime next week. I'm not sure day what, that's why I was asking if you think it's.
Because he's talking for John.
We'll just send him out there. Give him a big mallet.
Okay.
Snowshoes.
And/or, I don't, I don't know what the protocol is. If you're going on the weekend and you want to be there, I'm happy to attend.
Generally, the applicant has some attendance, only to answer questions to the board.
Yeah, right, if that helps.
There's no discussion taking place about, Rick can tell you better, no discussion about the applicant, but informational, you know, this is this corner, this is that corner, you know, where is the driveway, that kind of stuff.
Yeah. So.
The weekend is the easiest for me, but whatever the consensus is, I'll make sure I'm there.
The only thing, the applicant, Saturdays would not be a good day, correct? Saturdays would not be a good day, you would need a Sunday, correct?
Are you planning to go anywhere? Do you need the applicant?
You don't need.
We don't need, you know, as long as he lets Barry go, it's up to you.
It'll be Barry.
Okay.
He's available on Saturday.
All right. I hate to bring you up on a Saturday.
Making your schedule.
Because I think one of the two of you should be present.
This time of the year, it's not as bad as it's.
I know, but I think either one of the two of you should probably be present if we all go as a board.
Yeah.
a board.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not trying to avoid it, so I'll go if you want me there, but I think of the two of us, it probably, you would get more information from Dennis than you would from me.
I hear you.
I know that was genuine.
Actually, it was.
I am not available on the ninth or the sixteenth of February. I could do the second.
I'm away.
Okay. I'm trying to avoid January at all costs. Twenty-third, I couldn't do it until after.
What month?
That's February.
It's February. Yeah, I'm sorry, February. I couldn't do it until after lunch, because I'm working that day.
That might not be so bad if it's a, because it's going to be warmer. I mean, I don't know if you want to really do it in the cold. A little bit warmer in the afternoon anyway.
So possibly on this February twenty-third, let's say like one o'clock.
Can I ask when you're thinking about bringing us back here on this? Because if you do that, it doesn't sound like you want to see us in February.
Unless the board, if someone else wants to run it, go for it because if, I'm not going to be here on the ninth to the sixteen, I'm out of town on both weekends.
Well, if you want to do it during the week, just, I mean, if that's easier on the rest of the board and the applicant, just tell me when and I'll be there.
The, during the week is fine for me. That's better for me, actually, but you really have to pick a time when the sun's still up. You don't want to be walking around there when it's dark.
It's five o'clock, five thirty.
Yeah, now it's getting a little after five thirty. Or, yeah, close to five thirty, I think.
What does, what does Tuesday the twelfth look like to everybody of February?
Time would be.
Fine.
We could do four o'clock in the afternoon, I, three o'clock, whatever.
Four would be good for me.
Or I know there's.
Four o'clock.
Go ahead.
Last week of January is off the table. Is that what we were saying? I mean, with global warming and all, you know?
I know.
I'm not available.
Barry is correct. Guaranteed good weather.
Yeah.
That's good.
I'll rent the coach bus if you know.
We could do.
Just on behalf of the applicant, I'm just trying to see.
Yeah, I'm just, the fifth of February, not available. We could do the sixth, which is the first meeting in February.
If they want to get on an agenda, they want to submit their materials on the sixth or the twentieth. So if you have it on the sixth or later, it doesn't really matter, it can be anytime because then, then the next submission date will be the twentieth. If you're going to try to make it to have them have a submission by the sixth, you would need to make it before that. And they would need some time to, well, you're going to be working on it.
Maybe I should ask this question. Is the board going to consider setting a public hearing for this now? And the reason I think it should be, I'd like to see it earlier than later because, you know, the whole nature of this application is.
Thank you.
What is perceived as effects on the neighborhood. And, you know, this is really something I think is highly relevant to what the neighbors may have to say. And I think I'd rather have that input sooner or later because it might help us with our presentation and I'd like to know whether, you know, what we're going to run up against because otherwise we're going to start doing work and we may not hear from, you know, if we don't hear from the neighbors, I think it would be better to get that input sooner, as soon as possible.
The trouble that you have with, with that is the chicken and the egg. I mean, obviously, the board also wants to have the public have as much information as possible before. The compromise is that you may not have a one-night public hearing, that if you want the public's input a little bit earlier before you've submitted some of this other information, then the board may hold open the public hearing so that the public would have an opportunity to see the supplemental information before the public hearing is closed.
I have no problem with that at all, but I still think, you know, usually the public's going to come in with, you know, what their feelings are about the application and I'd rather, I think everybody would benefit from getting that sooner than, you know, holding off. So that's my feeling.
Okay. Well, I think we should try to schedule a site visit and then the board can decide whether or not it wants to set a public hearing. We've done this a few times in the past where we've set a public hearing because the applicant would like to get some feedback with the understanding that it likely then, because it's not a fully formed application at that point in time, that the public hearing will be carried over to another date when the public could be better informed as well.
All right. I'm looking at January thirtieth, which is a Wednesday.
I will, that's.
That's the whole week?
Twenty-ninth through the second.
Okay.
You'll make it before that.
January what?
January. Good?
No, because I'm not sure what we're going to, I don't, I have no idea what the storm is going to bring in the next week and they can't get out in time. We don't, it's some kind of a event Thursday, tomorrow night and then it might be some kind of event on Saturday. I have no idea what's going to happen weather-wise.
Twenty-eight, Monday?
No, I work that day.
All day?
I don't get home until six.
I can only do weekends.
Who can only do weekends?
Rich.
Rich? Everyone's killing me here.
Well, maybe that people have to do it on their own. You can't have a single day.
Could you just put maybe a couple five gallon buckets out there with four by four posts colored?
I don't think it's going to be us holding them.
Yeah. I personally, I don't think a site visit is needed. If it wanted, if we want to go out, I'm only available seven to three during the week. My two senses, I don't think we need, seven to three during the week. During the week.
If I could, I would offer this. We'll stake it out. All the stakes will have markings on it and we'll provide to the board a plan and we'll number the stakes so that you can follow on the plan where the stakes are.
I think it's the easiest.
So I think if you end up breaking apart or not going all together, you all have the plan, you could basically follow the numbers around.
So you'll do, I have a, I have a problem with board members going out willy-nilly on their own.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just offering, I'm just telling you what we're going to provide.
To walk the property on their own with trees and snow, ice or whatever?
Maybe we can try to get everybody there, but if Chris can't make it, he can go on his own. It's not everybody. It's just that somebody.
But I'm just letting you know that you'll have at least a roadmap if you do end up there by yourself. You'll be able to figure it out.
So you'll know, let us know when you have that up and?
I'm going to try to get the crews out there on Friday. I'll set that up. What I don't want.
I'm okay with the twenty-sixth.
I'm okay with the twenty-sixth.
Rich, you're okay with the twenty-sixth?
No, I'm not here that weekend.
Are you okay with the twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Rich, you said you're all right?
Which one?
It's Saturday the twenty-sixth.
If it's early in the morning.
What's early?
Before ten.
Changed my appointment. Want to meet up there at nine AM?
What? What? What's the date?
Saturday, January twenty-sixth. January twenty-sixth at nine AM. Everyone will meet up there at the site. Everyone knows where the site is. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't need a motion, we're all agreeing to that. Okay. And no discussion will be had, no decisions will be made. Just stating it for the public. All right. So nine AM, twenty-eight, twenty-sixth, excuse me, twenty-sixth Apple Hill. All right. So that's being done. Then we can work on the rest. And if for some reason that you cannot get that done, marking it out, let us know. Let Maria and Dennis know and they can let us know. All right? Okay. Anything else from the board that they want from the applicant or we're good now? All right.
Are you done with the discussion of public hearing?
No, we haven't decided on the public hearing yet. Thank you, I forgot about it.
That's all right. We're doing the site visit on the twenty-sixth. Potentially schedule a public hearing for the twentieth of February. I know a couple of us are going to be in school before that. Because the sixth is not enough time to schedule a public hearing.
Well, you could, you could schedule, it depends, if they're not going to submit anything and they're just going to go on what they have and get the public input, you could schedule it for the sixth with the caveat.
What's the, what's the date after the sixth?
Twentieth.
We do the twentieth?
We can do the twentieth.
Yes.
We are going to submit the new images.
And then you could submit the new images by, you have to submit them by the fourth.
Yeah.
Which is three weeks from now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're thinking two-twenty for the public hearing?
If that's acceptable to the board, yeah.
February twenty, you said?
Yes.
I'll offer a motion that we schedule a public hearing on this application for February twentieth.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right.
Okay.
Thank you. And good evening.
So that's February twentieth, okay.
February twentieth, public hearing. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. It's twenty-sixth Apple Hill on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I have to decide, I have to change my appointment. I have a non-early appointment that morning. All right, Dennis? Yeah, you can.
I can put that note on my phone.
Unfortunately, I thought we had a board, so I don't know if this is important. If I show you. You have, this is an application of the village, actually, not the village, Open Space Institute.
He can't hear you and you'd be videotaped.
All right. The Open Space Institute wants to take a property that they have, this is north of Troutbrook, this is Troutbrook Road here, Mineral Springs is in here, Route thirty-two, Route thirty-two is over here on the westerly side of the property. This is the old legacy Ridge property, or the portion that is on the north side of Troutbrook Road. That property was given or sold, I think it was given to the Open Space Institute after that project failed to proceed. And so this entire parcel, the green, including this pink shade here and the, and the purple parcel there, were all one piece of property at one time that Legacy Ridge owned and then was given to the Open Space Institute. Since then, and when it, I forget the timing on this, but the town and village obtained a small portion of property or retained a piece and received the subdivision for that little, that little purple circle there. That is in the name of the village now and the village owns that for future water supply. The Open Space Institute came to the village and said, this is not the best property we own, we own other properties, we'd like to take this property and we'd like to give it to the New York Parks. And so they wanted to transfer it to Parks. The village looked at that, thought that might be appropriate, but the village has needs for water supply. And the village asked, although we have the purple piece, that kind of restricts where we can put a well. And we'd like to have greater latitude because when you stick a straw down in the ground, you don't always get good water and you have to move someplace else. This area, we know to be prolific in water because there are a number of wells that have already been drilled just a little north of this and on the other side of thirty-two. Reports by Frimter, I think it is, show that there's a, a good underground water source here that's supplied by Mineral Springs. So we asked them for a little piece of property and they agreed. And so they've offered to give the village an additional seventeen point five nine four acres of property. And that'll bring the total holdings over in that area, including the existing well, to nineteen point two one seven acres. This transaction with the New York State Parks is about to take place, it's going to take place, I think their timetable is the end of March. So they said that they would be happy to give us that, but the subdivision has to be perfected and we have to do a subdivision. So we're going to present this on the Open Spaces' behalf so that we can carve out that parcel, go through the procedures here for a subdivision, obtain that subdivision, and then that parcel will be given over to the village. There is no development proposed in connection with this subdivision. This is going to remain parkland. And this parcel over here will be developed for water supply, but it's going to be pitless adapters, that's all that's going to be there. We have an existing wellhouse, an existing electric on another parcel just to the north here, right up in there. And we'll bring the water back in there through underground pipes and that's where we'll treat it, that's where we'll do all of our work on that. So over here, you really won't see anything, it's going to be a, it'll just look like it does now. So what I'm asking is, we just submitted the paperwork today, we are in a tight timeframe with Open Space because of their schedule and we've been after this for over a year. I'd like to have you set us a public hearing. We've submitted the materials and we'll have a public hearing at the next meeting if we And I'm free for questions of the board and council.
Oh, I've been waiting for this for a long time.
You go first, go ahead.
Well, you normally give Dennis this thing.
I know, go ahead.
I thought I'd get the first shot.
You will.
This is an unlisted action. There are no other municipal entities, so you could, under SEACER, you could assume lead agency type it as an unlisted hearing. Did you, did you submit an, did you prepare an EAF?
Yes, we submitted an EAF and we submitted an application signed by the owner of the property.
Okay. So you would have the ability, since you've heard what is being done on this property, virtually no development other than some water facilities for the village, you could make even your determination of significance that is a negative declaration. If, obviously, just like any other application, if something came up in the process before you gave your final approval, that would cause you to rescind that negative declaration, you have the ability to do that. So you're not boxed in by doing it. But I think under this very limited application, I think that it would be appropriate for you to assume lead agency, type it as unlisted and make a determination of a negative declaration. A two-thirty-nine is required, has that been referred yet, Dennis?
I don't believe so because I just gave the information to Maria today. We'll refer it over and we're probably going to try to press them if we can for an answer so that maybe the board would be in a position to take action at the, right after the hearing.
Okay. That's all I have.
Dennis, I see someone signed for the Open Space Institute.
Yes.
And it says NA, there's no name there on the, on the next form.
Right, because I thought this was, if they, if the owner signed the, the application.
I have no idea who signed it.
Okay, I can get you, that's Terrence's number? That's Terrence, I believe. I'll get you the information on the Open Space Institute.